Is he doing okay now? Is he good? Good. They usually figure it out eventually. It's just it's crazy while you're going through it. But, well, I retired. May 23rd was my last day teaching, so. Yeah, still keep doing this, but. Feels normal summer now, but I'm sure it'll hit me in a couple of weeks. I'll be like, wait, what?
Remember, you just want to make it or?
He doesn't need all the clothes. He had a whole bag in front of him. I texted Doug to make sure he's okay. You haven't heard it? Yes. Okay. And it is cold in here. And did they get five? Is it five minutes on a public hearing? Or is it still three? All right. Five minutes on a public hearing? Oh, it's a good question. I don't know if it says. Yeah, I didn't come in that way. Well, I think five would be fine today. I think we're okay. Okay? All right.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Are you ready, Lisa?
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our August 5th South Ogden City Council meeting. Entertained a motion that we begin.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Please join us in a mode of silence. After that, Councilmember Smythe will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Simone of silence, please. Thank you.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The book of the agenda tonight is our public hearing. It's part of Truth in Taxation. To receive considered comments on possible increase to South Ogden City's portion of property taxes, as well as our fiscal year 2026 budget. Let me talk for just a minute, refresh everybody's memory, explain some things, and then we'll hear from the public on this. So state law says if a city wants to raise, or any entity wants to raise, property taxes higher than what the county assessed value is, then we have to hold a truth in taxation hearing. South Ogden has done this many years in a row. The council has determined that it's a good, good practice in the sense that if you don't hold truth in taxation, you have to approve your budget in June. If you hold truth in taxation, you can approve your budget in August, after all the June financials are in and get a better picture of where you stand. So it gives a little more time to solidify the budget. Also allows for the council to do a different rate than the county. So currently, we are working at a .002507 for South Ogden City. The counties came out at 2455. And the council is considering raising it to .002578, which would be a 4.87%. That is a no higher than level. The council can choose to go lower than that. So the council could go 4.87% or anything, anything below that. The final budget approval will be two weeks from tonight at our next meeting. So nothing we finalize tonight. This is a proposal. And with, if the council did go to the .002578, which is the 4.8%, that would increase the average home in South Ogden, which they consider to be $483,000. A $200, no, $2.72 per month increase. So 32, just over $32 a year, $2.72 a month. This would give the city approximately $230,000 more than if we stayed with the county rate. And that money will be used for wages and fleet and try to keep up with inflation, so. Also remind you that this 4.87% or somewhat lower than that is just on the 22% of your property tax bill. It's not on, on the whole bill. It's on the city's portion. So with that, then entertain a motion that we open a public hearing to receive considered comments on the possible increase to South Ogden City's portion of property taxes.
So moved.
Second.
And the fiscal year 2026 budget. Thank you. You motion second that again, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, there's two things there. There's the increase to the taxes and the budget. So anybody that would like to speak on the property tax increase, we'd invite you to come forward and state your name and tell us what's on your mind. Come on up, Mr. Hawley.
Robin Hawley, 4500 South. I, they say to start local if you have a grievance. Mine is property taxes. Next year, my property taxes will be higher than my mortgage. Just so you know. I think property taxes are the most immoral tax there is. You pay your mortgage all your life. The lender gets their money right off the kid. Then the last part is yours. And then you have to run it from the state, the city, the whatever, for the rest of your life. But like I said, next year, my property taxes, not just here, from the whole state, the school, the water, this, that, will be more than my mortgage. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Anybody else like to address the crew here? Okay. If anybody could come up and discuss their proposed fiscal year 2026 budget at this time. Okay, seeing none, entertain a motion that we close our public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. All right. Yeah, there's no public, we're not on?
We're on YouTube.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. There's no, no comments on YouTube either. Discussion on the possible increase in South Ogden City's portion of property taxes. Mr. Andrew Warden, you lead us through this discussion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to be clear that there's, there's a litany of, of places where we needed to notice this hearing. One is on utallegals.com. And then, of course, the public notice website, which is, which is regular. And then we had to provide a Class A notice in the building and publish it on our official website. So I'm, I'm glad that we have some representation here from the public, whether to, to comment or to, to listen and, and follow that process. And so anyway, this is a pretty regimented process that, that I'm just affirming that we've, we've noticed it properly and, and whatnot. And I think I just wanted to say that the notice that was published, of course, is, for the average household, it's an increase of, of $32.68 per year. So, you know, like, sure, a couple dollars a month, but certainly we have to consider the principle of, of, the fact that we're definitely still increasing the burden on our residents to a degree. And the county, in their notice to, to residents for property taxes, sends out this little pie chart, right? And the city gets 22% of, of that revenue. So I think the only other thing I have to, to say is, of course, the, the maximum rate that we've proposed is the .002578 amount. And as you've stated, Mayor, we can't increase more than that amount. There are certainly many budgetary needs within the city that, that are going either, either being put off or could, could be met at a greater degree with these additional funds. And it's, it's important that we at least don't hit the residents hard all at once. I think that's all I have to say about, about the proposed tax increase. Thank you.
You know, I've said that other times, just that this is interesting in, on a city level with a tax increase because we're all residents of the city, too. You know, the state does it different ways, and they're residents of the state. But we all pay it. My mom, my mother's in the city, my, my brother's. Like, it's, it's something that we don't take lightly at all because it affects us and everybody we know. And, and, and I paid off my house last December, so my taxes will be a lot more than my mortgage will going forward. And that's, it's hard, so. Okay, thank you. Council, direction to staff, stay at the 4.87%? I mean, something to think about or sway. We'll vote next week, but, or two weeks. But if, strong feelings and persuasion of other council members to go a certain way, now would be a good time to, to speak up on that. Otherwise, staff will plan on the, the 4.87% on their final budget calculations. Councilmember Brown?
I was just gonna, with you asking for a comment, I was just gonna say that I'm staying with where we had said it.
Okay. At .2578? Okay.
I agree with that.
Okay. So we have two weeks to change your mind, but staff will proceed with that, with that in mind then for the final budget preparations.
Thank you for letting us implement that into our final budget. And if it changes, then we will adjust accordingly. Thank you.
And we have had some changes at the last minute on the last night, so stay tuned. Okay. Anything else on the budget? Had questions on? We had a budget work session previous to this. Yeah, Councilmember Stewart, please.
I actually had several questions. One of them was specific to the water fund. And it's just in the greater conversation about the water, the water fund situation. Let me get to where we're at. Okay, so it's on page 17. And I just am curious that the employee benefits, I was looking over the long term. Sorry, did I say it too fast? Page 17, are you able to be there? Okay, and then under expenditures, 514130, the employee benefits in 2020 to 2021 were $18,000. And for this coming budget year, it's $144,000. So it's, it's a huge change. And I'm just wondering if you have any insights into that change? So it's, it's gone up and down clearly. But, you know, the next year, 21 to 22, it was $70,000. The next year, it was $117,000. The next year, $95,000. This prior year that just ended was budgeted as $143,000. I just am curious what happened, that it went. And then part of what I was looking at was comparing it to the sewer fund because over the same time period, the sewer fund didn't make a similar jump in benefits.
Councilwoman Stewart, I would be speculating a little bit on this, but certainly we've had a lot more water projects in, in the year that I've been here than previously. So I, I would make the assumption that there's more employee time allocated to the water fund expenditures based on those projects. But I think it's, it's only fair that I get back with you with, with a little bit more in-depth analysis on the last three years of those, those benefits.
Ms. Turner, someone, you add some insight to that, please?
Yeah, I, I believe so is the turnover, too. You know, we've had the turnover and people have shifted from water to sewer to streets and all that. So that's why you're seeing some of the fluctuation up and down.
That much?
Yeah, we've had, yeah, some turnover in the last five years.
Because the salaries didn't change that much.
Yeah, but you're seeing guys with a higher salary go from water to streets or streets to water, you know? So you're seeing that higher salary being moved around, I think is a lot of the issue there.
So under the public works umbrella, some are paid out of water, some are paid out of sewer, some are paid out of storm drains.
Yes, all, paid out of all, yeah, all of them, yeah, correct.
But it's not the salary that's changing that much. It's the benefits.
Yeah, but if the salary moves over, the benefit's going to increase.
Right, but I would have expected that the salary would also increase, right? Like, so even from $70,000 to $144,000, that's doubled. But the, in, the salary and wages went from 243 to 307 in that same time period.
And it, it could be as simple as adding a new employee because the water one, just, you know, we were short for six, seven months, eight months, and adding a whole new employee to it, which would really drive it up also.
I just think it's interesting because it's...
So those aren't typos?
I, I haven't looked at it close enough, but I would assume that, that would be my answer for you to kind of, you know, the, how everybody's moved around and we haven't had people, you know, being able to staff it at the full level. And currently, we're down right now, too, so.
I guess another, another answer, which isn't, isn't a super good answer, would be that nothing has changed significantly in the employee benefits, right? So it's not like we all of a sudden enhanced all of these benefits, therefore the cost...
Or took some away.
Increased, or took...
Or took them away.
We did, though, didn't we?
Well, we've made benefit enhancements, yes. But I don't know that that...
I mean, there's going to be some additional costs to that, and I think we budgeted for those costs, but...
But that is a strange history to see it go.
I, I agree that...
Part of, part of the bigger question is because we're looking specifically at the water fund and saying we're needing more funds in the water fund, and the other funds are doing better. And so the question becomes, what is happening with this specific number that it's, it's not, you know, a, an, a expected trajectory? It's a up, down, up, up, you know? And it's not following the same curve as the others. And so it's just a curiosity to me specifically about that one.
And Mayor, I'll, I'll work with John and Peter and try to get some better answers for the next, the next meeting. We are going to talk about water, and that'll be a good time.
Yeah, please do. And that's interesting. Other questions? Councilmember Stewart?
Uh, yes. I guess I'm not sure how specific to get on some of these or if I, I'm better off to ask Peter. So just back on the council employee benefits. So that's up towards the front. So employee benefits for the council have, you know, they're, they're about the same or gradually going up. But I'm wondering, what is that employee benefit? Because at one point, anyway, what is that for? Because at one point, I thought it was for retirement, but none of us qualify for retirement benefit at this point, correct?
Definitely don't, so.
And so, sorry, Mayor.
Most of it. Actually, most of it is a FICA type expense. And actually, now that you mention it, we're... It's funny, I budgeted less than we already spent this year by a couple hundred dollars. But those couple hundred dollars, you know, you don't want to start lower than you spent.
But is it changing because there was a change in, in designation? I don't know what that's called, sorry.
It's okay, I've gotten over it.
Okay, that's good. But when did that take effect?
The couple hundred dollars is...
May or June.
Not much difference. And by the way, if any of you need to go in and look at your pay stub, just, because employees all the time get locked out of looking at their pay stub, you can, you can kind of see those itemized benefits and what you're not getting paid because of the, the FICA and whatnot, what the feds take from you. So I can help you log into that if you need any help with that, but. Thank you. Thank you for saying as much. And by the way, I did notice, I'm not calling anyone out here, that we did quite a few subscriptions and memberships. So I want to, we want to make sure we're accommodating the council's needs and continuing to add and you guys educating yourselves in your duties as well.
I did have a question about that. So is that just the Utah League subscription or membership or whatever?
Most of it is, yes.
Most of it is? Because that's gone up a fair amount in the last few years. Is that just a function of their costs have gone up and so our membership fee has gone up?
Yes, but, you know, when you, when you ask me a question like this, it's so easy for me to just print off a register of exactly what we paid for those expenses in the last year. And I'm happy to provide that, Councilwoman.
Okay, while we're right there, also the travel and training looks like, it looks like this year was more expensive. But it's budgeted for less next year. I guess I wonder if it's going to be more expensive, not less expensive, because the conferences are only getting more expensive, aren't they?
I agree with you. And I'm not making friends on the council right now by giving you less budget.
Hey, I think that, that people just do it anyway, regardless of whether there's budget there, so. Um, okay. I did have a question on non-departmental retirement benefits. And I will, I'll get to that page and tell you. It's on page five. And it went, over the last five years, it went from $40,000 to... It depends on if you look at our current year actual, which is $83,000. So it's more than doubled.
And I, I believe that has to do with the, the number of retirees from the city. But so fairly consistent over the last four years.
Yeah, more recently.
I actually love this stuff, so. Great questions. I don't have a great answer for you right now.
We can look at that. I would, I would anticipate we're having more employees retire that qualify for that continued retirement benefit that is paid out of this.
And so that number's going to continue to go up for the next few years? Okay. And then under that same department, computer contracts were pretty steady. And then for 2425, it was quite a bit more. I don't know if something changed. Well, more than double.
Yeah.
It was like...
Yeah.
But it's not budgeted for that much for this coming year.
Do they run about every five years, do they?
We definitely did some replacement this year specifically for police. And we, we might look at some of those capital needs and end up increasing that budget with, with the new direction we've gotten tonight. So appreciate that.
I do know we've, again, I don't, yeah, we'll have to look at that. The, the decrease, I don't fully understand. But seeing an increase, I know we have started going, as we swap out computers, going to the Microsoft 365, which is a subscription base now. And I, I know those contracts have, have gone up. And Summer may know, she's over IT, some additional information there. But I, I do know we have seen that shift to where, you know, Microsoft 365 now is a subscription and it's how you get your programs.
So do you anticipate that it'll be closer to what it was last year and not the 73?
I do.
Okay.
And I love these questions, by the way, because we look for anomalies in the budget. That's exactly what we do in our analysis, so.
So then I, I'm glad, because I've got some more questions for you. Under building and grounds, it says city building upgrades. This, this year was budgeted $196,000 and current year actual $15,000 paid out. Was that the carpeting and painting and stuff? Or is that something totally different?
It is actually totally different. And, and John wanted to make sure that we, we pushed a lot of that funding forward into, into this year for the, the building upgrades. John, do you want to, do you want to talk about what those are exactly?
Good answer.
I'd love to. One of the biggest ones, you see how they're concrete? We finally got the concrete going out there at Station 81 here. So they're tearing up front and back. We finally got them in here, actually today, to start going. Another one, we're looking at some ziruscape outside of City Hall, which will eat up most of, between those two will eat up the bulk of that money.
And that's listed together as city building upgrades?
Yeah, upgrades, yeah. There, I, I think there was, I know there was the carpet. There, there's also some windows, and we're looking at a few door things, some, some minor things, but those are the two major things, the concrete, and then looking at doing a, a landscape, a ziruscape outside.
So they're budgeted for 25. They weren't used, so we're like, we're going to carry them forward?
Correct, we've kind of been doing a little bit, you know, make sure we've got them covered instead of getting them all in and saying, oh, hey, I need more money. So you've just been kind of working with them, getting them piece by piece there. That answer your question?
Yeah, just because I knew that we'd talked about painting, et cetera, but...
Yeah, the painting and the carpet is done, was done last...
That's what I thought.
Yeah, that is done, but we still need, like, say, the concrete. He, he was supposed to be here in June. We, you know, we waited a little while to sign the contract. He is here now today and should have it done here in a couple of weeks, but that was one of the big ones. So, and then like, say, landscape, and we're still working, trying to figure out a design, what we want to do there.
And that'll be around this building?
Correct.
Not around the other buildings or...
Just this one.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 each building has its own. So if you wanted to do it at Station 82, Station 82 has a building maintenance, park shop, public works. Each one has its own building maintenance there.
Okay. Okay, those were the main ones I wanted to ask about right now. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up.
One of the things I might just bring up, and it's, it's nice to have expertise from like our assistant city manager. She came from a different city. And then, you know, talking to John, in the past, we had kind of an internal service fund for fleet. So that's something that we're looking at. We're, we're not going to implement it into this year's budget, but in a lot of, in a lot of ways, really, one department is, is running and taking care of most of the fleet for the entire city. So there, there might be some logic in, in putting that budget in a separate line item. And it's something I'll talk to the auditors about. Because there, there are additional requirements...